Our Facebook Live work session in preparation for our May the 18th. It is now 10 o'clock and we will, as I call a meeting to order, I have two in attendance. We do not have to have a quorum in order to have a work session. So we will proceed and the first thing on the agenda is a presentation by Mr. Doherty, who is our department head for parks. He's going to give us an update on parks operations, maintenance, and the use policies post COVID. So we're kind of coming back out of our COVID environment, if you will, please. And he's been hard at work with his staff, taking care of business. And we wanted to bring everyone up to date on what all we've got in front of us and what we're going to be doing this coming season, as well as the things that they're, they have done over the past COVID time to take care of business. So, Mr. Doherty, go right ahead.
All right, so we're going to cover a bunch of stuff that we've done since the beginning of October through this point and a little bit beyond what we think might be happening. So we've been working really hard on our mission statement and our vision and trying to really sit with our motto, which is, "We want Starkville Park and Recreation to be a place that will thrive." So everything we're doing is driving our entire department in that direction. Something that the folks didn't have originally, they did, but they didn't quite understand it, so we've been working on it. This is the base slide, I think demonstrates where the money is going, what things we've done, and what we've gotten out of some volunteer partnerships. So you can see here, we spent about $251,000 on a number of different areas to make improvements in the park and recreation this year. We've had a number of new type events and activities and things go on. So we've had some installation, we've had some partnerships, we've got the new disc golf course. I think one of the things that I like is the volunteer groups. We've had 245 people for almost 850 hours who have come in and volunteered through COVID to help us clean and keep things in better shape. So it's been pretty nice. And if we figure out a dollar value, that's about $9,000. And that's, you know, 850 hours later. We've been very fortunate with the intern program. We've had 18 interns for almost $1,800. And we've actually grown a bit more because Mississippi State is now reaching out to us again, trying to give us a few more marketing and some other folks, because now they're going back saying they're getting such great experience, such a great environment, hey, they're liking it, they want more people to come into the parks. And so it's pretty good. I like it. And then again, we're getting $31,000 of labor, you know, out of them, which is almost a full-time person. Sports tourism, up to this point, we've had a number of tournaments, soccer and baseball, softball. And moving forward through the rest of the year, we plan to have a total of 16 tournaments and we plan to be about $7.8 million on the economic impact for the year. We are currently over 3.5. We have next five weeks, some really big things happening, so that number's going to be driven. And then at the bottom of that, you can see what we're using for the multiplier to determine where that's 7.8.
And I'm going to interrupt you just for a second and say that we've, we've not got them posted yet, I don't think, but we have our new sales tax and our hotel numbers, and they are nicely up. And so part of that is reflective of what the parks is doing, which is again, why we're doing what we're doing. So I think that's, that's notable. So, sorry, go ahead.
Does anybody have any questions about this slide?
Those volunteer groups, besides the Eagle Scouts, who else have we, who else have we?
So we've had a number of church groups.
Okay.
And we have groups of people who come in to rent our facility, who have asked us to do in-kind service instead of offsetting some of the costs. And so we've had Mississippi State rugby groups in, we had some theater groups in, we had just regular citizens of the community had all teams that were coming in, and they were doing, would pick up the trash. A lot of that is picking up the parks, but a lot of the other stuff has been putting picnic tables together. I got some photos of a few groups at the end, too. There was a fraternity group that came in a few weeks back during Bulldog Bash to help with some picnic tables. So it's been quite a variety of folks.
Okay, thank you.
Tell me about the birdhouse at McKee.
So the high school forage came to us and said, "Hey, we'd like to build this birdhouse." And I said, "Why?" And here to find out, there's a, there's a bird that eats tens of thousands of mosquitoes in a day. And because they are nuts, it's really difficult for them to survive in that area, they build these birdhouses that bring these birds in so they can house them. And so the birdhouse will keep the birds there to eat the mosquitoes to help reduce some health problem in that area. We chose it in the back of the park near the creek, so it would be kind of off the beaten path and it wouldn't be disturbed, because that's what they thought. And they have been absolutely fantastic. They've put it up, they've managed it, it's really a great project.
I'm going to come take a look, so.
Yeah, I have a photo left towards the end, let's see. All right, so to break it down, I gave some categories. So we've worked a lot on energy conservation, if I am, fixing water leaks, installing touchless, we've done motion sensors to try to reduce the footprint that we provided. Some of that $251,000 also went for security and safety improvements, and you can see the list that goes with that. We've upgraded our systems with IT stuff, which you can see, we've done updates on facilities and we've done updates on parks. And so they're kind of listed out there to see or show some of the kind of bigger areas. The question I then get is, well, what, what was going on in the parks? And so if you go to the next slide, please. This is where it starts to break it down into the specific park areas to show you the different things that we've done. So we've done a lot of clearing and cutting and trimming, a lot of bathrooms, we've inspected playgrounds and fixed many of the playgrounds elements. You can see we spread it all around. So it wasn't concentrated in one area, we really took the focus on trying to do it as a collective. Next slide. This is Moncrey, it's an extension, as you can see, Moncrey does also have some of that. If you go to the next slide, we also have Travis Outlaw Center. We focused on the annex, cleaning the annex up, and also we did some repairs of the new animal center. So that money that we've been spending has been spread across the entire park district and hasn't been consolidated into one or two things. We wanted to make sure that we could touch as many things as we could. So as you know, we don't, we have a couple of projects on our plate. So we created a project list to try to help create some prioritization and funding. So we listed out the projects that we currently have planned out to do, and we can see there's two pages of those on slide eight and nine. And we're up to about 90 different projects throughout the parks right now. That doesn't include any of the cornerstone projects or anything like that. We are continually trying to do as much as we can in-house so we can do more things. And so we've really reduced our contract labor, and that's why you've seen us accomplish so many things this year, because we're doing it in-house. And so if anybody's got a project they want to add to the list, just give us a call and we'll have it, so. Cornerstone, going well, we just got bid three. Phase three bids in, looking to get those approved here potentially in the next board meeting. Phase four with the alternates 12, 11 and 12 came in, looks really good there. Sports management facility, management group, we've been in contact with them, we're moving forward, I've talked to them this week a couple times. We have a scheduled meeting next week to talk about some operational things. And then we're still looking at some type of opening in spring of '22.
Let's, before we totally leave future project lists, are these, just from my information, these are not in order of priority, right?
They are not right now.
You just, okay, are you, do you have them prioritized somewhere?
So we have them grouped into categories and then have dollars associated with them. And so when we come in for the budget meeting?
Okay.
We're going to take that list and start kind of figuring out what we want to try and say, and what that priority kind of looks like.
Okay, well, some of it is still stuff that you can do in-house, like, like trimming and that sort of thing, so, okay, all right, just, that's all, sorry, go ahead.
So the sportsplex is gone, we did a bid on the parking lot, it came in a bid over a million dollars, so we're going to attempt to rebid it in a different way to reduce that cost. Our challenge is, is all materials are coming in super high. Limited amount of labor because everybody's busy right now, it's pushing prices. So we're going to try to take a different approach to rebid it, to see if we can get to the groundwork with the parking lot and the turf field moving forward, because we feel we'll get more people bidding on it at that point. We only had really one person bid on the parking lot. And so if we kind of change our approach, we've been told there'd be some other folks who'd be willing to bid on it, they just didn't want to do certain aspects of the parking lot. But if it's all underground, which is the same type of work, they'd be more willing to bid on it. So we're trying to figure out how to make that more compatible.
And that's coming to us at this, on this agenda, y'all. And, and I'm just going to take, take just a moment and say, that is true of every project we're dealing with. The build project, for example, I had a conversation with the governor's staff, was calling, they're soliciting requests for infrastructure improvements in, in municipalities around the state because of the federal dollars that are coming up, coming down to, to the states. And so one of the things I submitted to them was the fact that our build grant is, has gone up, projected to go up a couple of million dollars. And so that's just one of those things that we don't know, you know, we haven't bid it out yet, but next year, for example, when we get ready to, to go to bid for some of those things, we may find ourselves in that, in that situation. And so trying to head that off and maybe find other places that we can get some funding to support that, those increases that everybody is experiencing. So this, plus cornerstone, plus the bill grant, plus anything else we're doing right now, we're seeing 15 to 20% cost increases in our materials and timing, which of course costs money as well. So just, just so that everybody understands, some of what we're going to see on this agenda is, is relative to, to some of those increased costs, so, sorry, go ahead.
People see that in their personal lives and small projects that they're doing and...
Can't find lumber, yeah.
We're not the only city that's facing these sorts of things.
So the sportsplex will, will be trying to still push forward with the turf field and the amenities there by the summer of '22. And then we're working to finalize the master plan at McKee here in June. Once we get the parking lot and the turf field and some of the sportsplex stuff moving, we'll have a better idea, but right now, a rough target is fall of '22 for McKee, so. One of the things we're looking at doing is trying to get more information to the public with park hours. So the next few slides are some of the policies and procedures and hours, and so if we need to change or adapt to anything, please let us know. This isn't set in stone, but this is just a bit of our recommendation. So we'd like to try to get the parks to be open from 6:00 in the morning to 9:30 at night. The reason 9:30 at night is because we want to make sure that we're turning lights off, we're checking bathrooms, and we're doing those things, and our facility is going to close at 9:00. So if the Travis Outlaw Center closes at night, it gives us time to go out with somebody to do those rounds, instead of having somebody on the staff specifically for a few hours where they're not working, just to make sure the lights and bathrooms are closed out. So it's trying to marry this up a bit, and if there's a better way, please let me know. We're just trying to figure out how to be the most efficient as we can with people and provide those opportunities.
Do you see a lot of usage of the parks after, after 9:00?
I would say I have not, unless it's programmed, pro activities. Now, I will say that it fluctuates based on the courts and the locations, there'll be people potentially using them, but just general walking and things like that, I haven't seen a lot of that.
So we don't have to kick people out at 9:30, at 9:30 or 9:00 o'clock when we close, Travis Outlaw Center, for example? You're not finding yourself kicking people out, going, "Okay, we're, time closed"?
No, usually they're pretty good about like, "Hey, we're closing at 9:00, so everybody kind of wants out," so.
Well, I didn't mean, let me rephrase that. I didn't mean that you had to kick them out. I meant, do you still have a whole lot of usage that late at night?
I can't confirm that, I wasn't here last when it was open at 9:00. 9:00 o'clock during the week is the feedback we receive from the, the group meeting is that we don't want our kids out during the week past 9:00, it's too late. And so we're trying to create a bit of a balance with that to say, "Hey, some people who work in the afternoon might want to be there a little bit later." We're also going to be programming a lot of Travis Outlaw Centers, so a lot of the stuff won't be just open gym there, we'll have athletics.
For someone who has to physically go out and check each door and lights and all that, right, does that would understand?
Yeah, so for right now, that we would. So we don't have an automated system that shows...
Are those cost prohibitive? I know, like, I've seen people residential, you know, the app, and you can go in, lock your back door, bump your AC, turn a lot, you know, and all, except...
So Musco has a system over at Cornerstone that we're trying to implement at the parks, and when I, sportsplex specifically, for the lights. And then once we get that platform online, we may be able to extend that into a phone system for the security of bathroom doors, so that we can do it remotely. It's just going to take a little bit of phasing, but right now, we're trying to get the backbone, which is that Musco lighting system. Once we get that in with some of the security stuff, it shouldn't take very long for us to get the bathrooms on there, too. And then we can remotely open and close it. And some security cameras to see. One of the concerns is that if you get locked and somebody's inside, there's always an emergency or motion sensor lets people out, and we can monitor that from afar to see if somebody was in there or wasn't, without going in the bathroom, so.
Till we get an update, you don't have to worry about jail or key, because I'm so close to it, I will make sure the bathroom is locked. Since I'm so close to it, so you want, I'll take care of that, till we get updated.
You're not out that late at night.
Well, it is, that's my bedtime, that's why I'm not volunteering to go over to McKee, so.
Another thing is the usage, one of the things we get feedback on is not the quality usage of basketball courts and tennis courts with soccer fields and the other baseball fields with lights. And so what we're going to do is start planning, again, with conjunction with the hours of the facility, is to have those available on for those individuals in a location designated. And so that way, when we close, you can also make sure we shut those lights off, because that's a manual process for us. Once we get the system on board, it'll be a little better, but right now, it's going to have to be manual, so. Does anybody have concerns about basketball? Park policy and rules is pretty kind of straightforward for your park stuff. You know, dogs on leashes, pick up waste, put your trash away, no illegal guns or drugs, things like that. The only one that is kind of different is at the bottom. We'd like to have a clause in there that will provide us the opportunity to tow a vehicle out if it feels like it's been abandoned in the park. And if we're trying to close a park down, make sure that people aren't in there lingering around, we would like to have that as an option, so that way we can call the, the authorities that are coming in to do that. Currently, when I do the tours in the morning, like early mornings, we do have some cars that are five o'clock parked, and so maybe they should be. So try, try to resolve that, so this morning, there was one.
And they're, they're parked from last night, or they've just come in early in the morning?
Well, it was 5:30, and they were parked at the top of the hill down at Moncrey, at the pavilion behind the tree. So I'm sure they were probably, they could have been there, but the car motor was pretty cold, because I felt it, so.
Okay, so you think it was there overnight?
Potentially, yeah.
Somebody in it?
Yep, two people.
Okay. Okay, well, we're going to be gating, at some point, we're going to be gating Moncrey, so closing, closing that off. But before we close it, we're going to make a circle of the park and make sure there's nobody in there?
Yeah.
That will be the plan, right? Okay. Knock on the door and say, "Okay"?
I did, cautiously.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And then, yeah, and I went back at 7:00, and they had still, they were still there, so.
Okay.
Pool is going to be up and running this year. We're going to be opening on the 28th and running through Labor Day. Our hours are listed, and the reasons our hours are what they are is why I listed them. So we're going to be 11 to 6:00, 10 to 6:00 on Saturday, 1 to 6:00 on Sunday. We're going to be offering swim lessons, not just during the day, but after the workday. We had some people who were interested in doing it afterward, because they can't get out with their kids. And then we also had the swim team come to us to do swimming from 8 to 10 during the summer, they're working through the contract currently. The rates are $3 for 5 to 12, 13 and up is $5, singles are $75, families are $150, $150 for four people. Any additional family member would be $25, up to a maximum of eight people. These are the pool policies. Basically, what we're saying is, is that if you're under the age of 12, you must be accompanied by an adult. Between the ages of 13 and 17, you need to have a parental release. And if you're under the age of eight, in the pool with a parent, the parent needs to be with them in the water. In the past, I will say that what I'm getting is, feedback is, many people will bring their kids and just leave them at the pool, all ages. And so there's no parental guidance or anything, and they're just there all day long. That is a major liability for the city. So what we're trying to do is manage that in a way that still allows kids at a certain age to use the pool, but doesn't turn our lifeguards, where they're there to save lives, into straight-up babysitters. And so this will give us some flexibility to try to enforce a little bit of that. Our new civic rec system will allow us to register people, so we'll know who has a parental release online or not, and we can monitor that as they come in. So we're just trying to make it safe for everybody and make it, make sure there's no incidences.
Okay, so who's the person, you're probably the one that has, the closest to having had children, smaller children. I remember getting dumped off at the pool. I mean, that's what I did, they dumped me off at the pool, and I stayed there pretty much all day, and I don't remember my parents ever showing up. Do you, I'm just wanting some feedback, because I'm, because I'm curious.
Once, once we knew they could swim, you know?
Yeah.
You know, I would never have left them when they were younger that couldn't swim.
So is eight, is eight an age that...
Once you knew they could swim.
Probably more like 10, probably.
Oh, well, okay, all right, well, again, I just wanted to get a little feedback, because I, I remember being, go have fun.
Abused as a child.
Yeah.
Things still come up, you know, usually 10-year-olds aren't going to have phones and, you know, I don't know if I would just leave one at 10, you know? Times have changed, I think.
They have, and that's the reason I'm asking the question, is because, you know, from my perspective, it was just kind of, here's, here's your money for a frozen Snickers bar, have at it.
You've always been independent.
Maybe, maybe that's it, so, anyway, okay, great, thank you.
It's just like Brendan said, a lot of people, that's what they do, they drop their kids off, and some of their kids be there all day till they, till they come back and get them.
Yep, you get wrinkled and pruney and...
Someone will be mad if their parent come back before time.
Yes, that's exactly right, that's exactly right.
That's something like an hour or so.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate the feedback, I just was wondering myself.
All right, so the Travis Outlaw Center, starting in June 1st, is going to be opening from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Saturday, 8 to 12, and then closed on Sunday, because we have contracts with people using the gym on Sundays. We have the ability to be flexible as possible, as I talked about earlier, these hours are kind of melted around the fact that we want to try to have staff on site so we can do some of these other things throughout the parks. Opening up a little bit later, we can absolutely do that if we need to, it just goes, the group that we talked about said during the week, 9:00 o'clock's a good time. Now, if we have programming, like, programs, like basketball's an example, we may, we'll leave the center open, because we're going to have to play games. And, but for the general use or open gym and that kind of stuff, this would be our base schedule. Anything that we would do beyond this would be programmatically, it would be programmatic. I mean, it wouldn't be something where we just open it up and let people come in. It would be ran, because that's what the program needs to do, so. Policies are pretty straightforward, again, everyone needs to be registered. Ages are a little bit different, 12 and under, accompanied by an adult, 13 to 17, they have a parental release. The big thing for me is that they need to register when they come through the facility, so we know who's in the facility to help the facility be safe. Right now, we don't know who comes in and who goes out, but if we have a little bit of control at the front, we kind of make sure that the kids are safe when they're inside the gym.
And I haven't been in there in a while, you've moved the, the desk to the front, so that you'll...
We're moving it towards the front, yeah. So when you walk through the front door, we'll have a desk with the civic rec system to help people register, it's free to do, they just need to register and make sure we have the parental releases. And then they'll get a little fob, it's like a normal thing, and they would scan through, and they just go on their way to do whatever they want to do. What helps us is making sure that we have some of that data, too, because we want to come back to say, "Hey, we have all these people using it between these hours, let's, let's do something to help maybe expand it, so it's not as impactful." Or we can go on the other side and say, "Hey, we only got three people in these two hours, maybe we need to look at adjustments and things." But without the data, we can't, it's just guessing, so. And this is just an extension of those rules, which are pretty basic. Contracts, rentals, usage and reservations, we're going to be pushing through the civic rec system. Those will get printed and signed off by customers and then brought to the board as needed to be reviewed and signed off by the city. Refund policy, one thing we're not very good at right now is the refund policy. So what we're saying is that if you make a reservation for a facility usage, like a pavilion, you get a full refund if you cancel before eight days. If you make a cancellation after eight days, they don't necessarily qualify for a full refund. If they do get a refund, we're letting them know it's taking 45 days, we don't expect it to be that long, but that is, it could happen. If there is a program or a tournament or event, something like that, and it's already started, like more mid, like baseball right now, mid-season, a parent comes and says, "Hey, I want a refund, quit," we're saying, "Sorry, but the season has already started, you're not going to get a refund." So we're allowing people to reschedule, because everything's going to be online. So if you want to reschedule your appointment after you've already paid, you're more than welcome to do that, along with your eight days out.
And in your determination of the, of the cost structure and stuff, you, you did research in surrounding communities and around the state, is that correct?
That is correct. So we took into account, when we get into that page, we took that specific stuff and recalled a number of resources in the area, determined what they were charging. We took that, brought it back and realized that we were charging with this. To be competitive, it would be a certain dollar amount, and then we dropped it to ensure that we were below that rate, so we encouraged people to come to us.
Okay, well, and we're not competing with other towns necessarily, but we just don't want to be out of line with what is reasonable.
And we are reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
And a question I get all the time, or I get frequently, is, "These are public parks, why do I have to pay?" And what I've come to realize over time is that when you reserve something for a group, it is no longer a public function, it's transitioned to a private function.
So the fee structure, we try to make it as simple as we can, so that the customer and the city has a way to manage this. And so some of these things may never be rented or used, but some of them get used quite a bit. So pavilions and rooms and things like that get rented quite a bit. The pool, outdoor courts generally are not rented a lot, but we do have groups like tennis who want to use the courts and reserve them to do camps or clinics or lessons. And so we try to come up with a way, how do we manage that? Because anybody who does some type of revenue generating operation needs to kind of figure out how to, how we schedule it, how to begin a contract, make sure they have insurance, We have two types of reservations, we have general reservations, which is your personal stuff, I might have a birthday party, you know, it's family-related, and then you have kind of event usage, which is more business-oriented, where they're actually doing a fundraiser, they're, they're hosting some type of event, they're assembling a group of people that wouldn't be necessarily kind of like a personal function. And so as we look at that, we kind of, Chris and I have talked a bit, there's a bit of a delineation in some of the contract language, and so we're kind of separating those two out. The priority usage, Starkville Park and Rec gets first priority, Starkville Business would get second, the Starkville residents would have priority over non- The Starkville residents would have priority over non-Starkville residents. So, now with the civic rec system, we're able to track who's a resident, who's not a resident, to determine where they fall in the priority. Again, all the reservations will be done online. Most of the reservations, the big piece here is can be made one hundred and eighty days out. So, they could make the reservation today for one hundred and eighty days out.
And civic rec is a link off of your...
Yes, it is.
Okay. And we link from city website?
Yes. Yep. So, in July, the civic rec will be beta-tested, and then our header will be in July, too. So, when we get to that, I'll... Discipline, this was a, a generous increase, because I've kinda asked the folks, like, how did we do this in the past? And then, there wasn't a real solid answer. So, we came up with a three-spread procedure. Basically, if you have an offense where you're escorted out of an event, or you break the rules until the point where we have to maybe call the police, we give you a warning, and we'll provide you a written warning in mail. If you're a participant, obviously, you're gonna be suspended for a game. If you do it a second time, then we're gonna remove you from a league if you're a parent or a child. If you do it as just a general user, we're gonna suspend your services for three months. Now, because we have civic rec in place, we can monitor that, because everybody's registered with the group. And if they do it a third time, then they're suspended indefinitely. Now, every time I say that, somebody looks at me and says, well, what if it was unjust? Right? So, if you go to the next page. We do put into a process that allows them to evaluate at a higher level, so that we are not the end-all, end-all. So, when they get upset up to us for enforcing those policies, we wanted to give the customer an opportunity to say, hey, there is another option, because sometimes things do happen, and maybe we do see it differently. But, we came up with a nice option for the mayor.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this one now. Hopeful that I will never be party to any of this. And if worse comes to worse, and they don't like me, then they can always come to the board. That's right.
Circuit court.
The thing is, you know, they just wanna be able to have an option, you know. And I, and I'm gonna enforce that policy for sure, and be flexible and understanding this. But there is a time where we have to hold that line, and what we do, and they're not, they're upset about it. Just giving them, saying, well, there is another option.
Is that a big issue over there?
We have a lot of discipline.
Yeah, as far as people having issues like that?
Uh, I wouldn't say so. Most of the time, you tell them to kinda calm down, they get kinda, they get okay with it. I don't see it becoming a step very often at all. But there is a time where sometimes the parents or coaches act out of line and try to reel them in, and then have to tell them, like, listen, keep it up, gotta go. And then, in the, and I was told in open gym, really don't have too many problems, because it's monitored quite a bit, so they cut it off before anything else starts, so. So, some of the things that we talked about in our list or projects, these are the photos. So, these are some of the before and after. The ones on the top is the concession stand in the outlaw center. So, when I got in there, there was mold growing in the drain. There was red mold in the freezer that is just disgusting on the left. And then, after about two months, we cleaned it all up and got it up to food standards, and that's what the bottom picture shows.
In fairness, this was after having been closed for a while, for, although the underlying problem was probably there, so.
I will give them the benefit of that, but I'm sure that that probably wasn't six months ago.
Well, and you do, you know food serve...
I do.
Standards, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other places within the park that we've been cleaning out are a bunch of places like this. Lots of graffiti, lots of trash. This was the top two on the right, where somebody was living in there at some point, and I found out in October last year, got the door closed, and cleaned it out, got them out. You know, we have tree lines on the fences that are just way overgrown. So, we spent a lot of time cutting those back, which I think a lot of people have seen. And then, like the one on the bottom in the middle, we have panels that are open with wires, because we don't have covers on them, or we don't lock them, so that people can't get in there. So, it's just one of those ongoing things. We're getting better, securing things up a bit, but we still have a little bit to do. And we'll never get rid of this one hundred percent, but we can do a better job of looking.
I think a lot of people don't realize that this takes time, you know. We're all the old do all day. Well, we do little stuff, we do big stuff, but a little stuff takes a lot of time, so.
Yeah.
And just going back behind people, as Henry knows in particular, going back behind people who have, you know, done damage to bathrooms, for example.
Yep.
Takes, it takes time and money, and it's unfortunate.
Usually, the bathroom faces a two to three-day job for somebody.
Yep.
And it's just, the top three pictures are the pools. So, that's the previous pool picture. The one on the left demonstrates the concrete that's probably never been cleaned ever, and then the wall and the paint, and how it's all flaking off. The one in the middle is actually a picture of the front. And then, the one on the right is actually where the pipe has been broken underneath the poolhouse and was flooding, all the way from basically where you see the flakes of the wall down to where that blue curtain is, under the concrete. So, we took six weeks to track that down, re-pipe it, we filled in all the voids with foam, and now, we're starting to get into the point where you see it at the bottom. We've cleaned the concrete up. That's the deck on the right, the front, and the trash cans. We're getting a nice aesthetic pool, so that people are gonna enjoy themselves when they come. And we're not quite done yet. Still a couple more weeks before we'll get to that point, but again, we're trying to show that we're making progress in what we're doing. We're trying to make it work, so. These are some of the other projects that we got going on, and you'll see some finished stuff. So, on the top left, that is actually the annex. That's the entranceway when you walk into the annex. You had done here before, it was brutal. We got the flutters on the annex building. And also, we talked about an environmental piece. We got the tints on the windows to reflect the light to keep the cooling down. And we've had a lot of people tell us, like, it's, it makes a huge difference. So, the only thing we need to do there is get those round lights working. The birdhouse is on the bottom left, so that's the high school nearby, they're building the birdhouse. And then, you have speed bumps. We'll prove right past that, in the corner of that. The website, that's the one next to the annex building, so we're gonna be marching that out pretty soon. One of the things of the big focus is security. So, the door, the light is interesting. That's the employee entrance. There was no light there, and there was no fob reader there. So, when you would go there in the morning or late at night, it was completely dark. And so, we have a lot of women that were working that, you know, are walking out the door, and it's dark, and they're by themselves. And I just don't think that that was a very safe environment at any level. And so, as we met, we got the light installed. Around the corner, there's two more lights, and then, we got the fob door access, so we had better control, because we had a lot of key problems also. So, we had given out a lot of key equipment to the state and all that. These are some of the volunteer groups. So, we got some groups on top over at the Key working on the playground. Got some people on the bottom working on the Patriots Park. These are some of the groups that have been coming in. We had some kids come over for Arbor Day. You can see, we're trying to be a bit more professional at times when we do things. That's us with the yellow shirts. The two groups in the middle are actually fraternity groups at Mississippi State. And then, we have the interns on the top right. And then, that bottom right picture is the first time the staff got together to do a project. That was our very first project we did with staff, so, yeah.
And I wanna, I don't know why it took us a while to think about it, or a while to realize it, but I really applaud the, the use of acknowledgement of who's parked, who is a parked person. Because when they're, you know, people would say that there's nobody out in the parks, but that's just because we weren't obvious by virtue of the dress and the attire, so.
Yeah.
You know, kudos on that, particularly with the bright-colored shirts, so that they're easily accessible, accessible and identifiable, yes, so, okay. Any questions from anyone? Alden Sistrunk?
Flashpad will be open, February twenty eighth also. So, that wasn't mentioned, but the flashpad's gonna be open.
Be open when?
Twenty eighth, so. And then, hopefully, it'll be open a little bit later this year, too.
As long as we got warm days and we haven't winterized it, I would like it to be available, because it's, it's so easy and so, you know, so fun, so, okay.
Thank you, Brandon. I appreciate the detailed update. It's a little like you and your staff have been very busy.
Yes, we've, we've been very busy. Just special thanks to everybody who supports us, though, because even though we have a really, our staff is great, and they do care, and they love the job, and they love the people in this community. We can't do that without you guys' support, so we just really appreciate the ongoing support that you guys provide.
Always good to see the progress.
Great job, great job.
And I really like the fact that volunteers, we've got a lot of volunteers, because that makes, you know, many hands makes light work, so with all the volunteers, the dog park people are busy, you know, all of that, so. It's been great. It's been great. All right, thank you, Brandon, appreciate it. Okay, we wanna roll through our agenda here and see what we can put on consent, and what might require a little discussion from our assembled staff behind us. Two sets of minutes, Chris, or you got thumbs up on all of them, okay?
They're ready to roll.
That'll make Lisa happy. You consent on those, guys? Okay. I don't know that I have anything necessarily that's gonna come up, comment-wise, but y'all have anything you wanna have printed on the agenda? No? All right, we're gonna have public hearings. This is gonna be a big public hearing time. This is gonna be our first public hearing on the juvenile truancy and curfew law. And so, Chris has tweaked it some.
No, there's been no...
You didn't tweak it?
And let me just speak to that, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
So, we're trying to hold up on just edits after edits after edits after edits. And so, I wanted to have this first public hearing, get all the feedback from the board, all the feedback from any citizenry, before we write in those edits. So, there're gonna be some slight tweaks, but I think we're close to a final draft. I know the chief's gonna make a presentation, I believe, Tuesday night, with even more facts than he presented at the work session. So, we'll incorporate all that into the, to the next draft, but this is a good draft.
Okay, I thought you had tweaked it from a, from a case law perspective.
No, I tweaked it just from a couple of subject verb things.
Okay.
But I held off on the case law for one round of edits between the first public hearing and the second public hearing, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, cool. Well, anyway, we'll be having, we'll be having a public hearing on that, with conceivably adopting it at the, at the first meeting in June, so. All right, public hearing consideration, these are going to be, well, this one actually, Daniel, this is, the first one is the special exception for the conversion, and you got...
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward.
Okay.
It is potentially directly up for approval by the state, so.
Okay, all right. And then, the next three are our Everglade Avenue buildings, four, five, and eight at Brooksville Gardens. So, we have gone through several iterations of that, several public hearings for that, but in effort to be as absolutely thorough and, and lock down the legalities of this, we're bringing it back again, and we've got a pretty detailed presentation that we're gonna make in order to make that record, because on this is also, once we do that, on this is also, and we can't do anything, we can't consent any of these, so we can kinda go to the next page, because under Mayor's Business, I put advertising for bids to demolish those buildings. So, I want us to go forward with that as soon as the board makes that finding, assuming the board makes that finding, based on what the chief provides. I want us to go forward with advertising for bids for that demolition, so just letting you know. So, we'll have those public hearings, and then, the first item up is the, is the, under Mayor's Business, is the finalization of the, of the park project. So, we're looking at the additional two fields, and we're looking at the adults that had been, that had been included originally and that were part of the concept of moving forward for finishing up Cornerstone. So, from a financial standpoint, Alden Sistrunk has blessed it, from a, from a financing standpoint. And so, that'll be something for us to hopefully move forward with on, on Tuesday. So, any questions?
Let's just say at Cornerstone, phase three bid, so just, so it's least mentioned in there.
Okay, good. Lisa, you got that? Yes, good idea.
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
Phase three and phase four, or this is just phase three?
This is face, phase, phase three.
Phase...
We didn't have a fourth phase.
Some of the Dallas Thomas things refer to a phase four for fields eleven and twelve.
Okay, Brandon?
Yep, so, so this bid includes partial work, and I think when they're referring to phase four, eleven and twelve, it's the change orders that are gonna be for the sole source with lighting turned part of that.
Okay.
Separate from this, right?
It's in that total.
Which is...
It is in that total?
No, it's not in that total.
No, it's not. It's further, yeah, it's further down here, so.
Who would that be coming?
Well, I was thinking it was on this one, is it not on?
No, it's on...
I thought it was, yeah.
So, if it doesn't get pushed or accepted in the agenda for this meeting, it will create a problem with muscle lighting, because they don't have the ability to hold the pricing in low.
Yeah, it goes back to our pricing.
Everything's going up right now.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's under number five, under parks. Okay. So, okay. All right, and then...
Did you decide consent or not on the one?
We actually didn't get there. We were, we were re...
I interrupted.
Yeah, that's, no, providing feedback for Cornerstone to be in there. Any, any feeling for consent for, for this?
I'm fine with it, if everyone else is.
Almond Vol?
Which one is that?
That's the Cornerstone increase?
Nine million?
Yes, sir.
You just leave it on there.
Okay. It is a big number, isn't it? Okay. Then, as I mentioned, the next one is gonna be bids for the purpose of demolition. Normally, I would say put it on consent, because I'm really all for it, but until we have a finding of fact, we'll have to leave it off. All right, in the next two, we've got two positions, and each one are the sole applicants, so consent for those two. Okay? And airport, this is gonna be a grant with a two-point-five percent match, which heaven forbid, I wish we could get that on all of our other projects. Consent, consent for that, I would hope, okay? And discussion of placing wayfinding signs within the right-of-way, that's all three eighty-nine and one eighty-two. So, but they just have to have our approval in order to put it in the right-of-way, so that should be, thank you, consent. The next one is the final plat. Daniel, anything about that one, was that approved?
It's a, it's a minor subdivision, it's just moving a lot of line forward by the...
Okay, and so, there was no controversy? Okay, consent for that one? Okay. And then, we have, we need to start back with our, with our training guys, so we've got some training that's gonna be coming forward to us, as we wanna make sure that we are as professional as we can be. We haven't been to a BoAM to get our, our certification, so this is to start sending people back to get certification. So, from Mike St. Louis to go down to Gulfport on consent. Okay, under engineering, we've got two low quotes. One of them is for the Garrett Road project, which is the vice manager's project for the sidewalk leading to the shuttle stop, and then down to Hawasi. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And the other one is the Lynn Lane sidewalk connector.
Where's that going?
Cody?
It connects from the multi-use path that Lynn Lane's out in Montgomery.
Oh, north, oh, south, going south to Fornay.
To the new boundary.
Right.
And make a pretty big connection.
Yep, okay. So, consent for that one?
Are they paying that to connect there? It's Fornay project?
Uh, no, no, that's, that's on the city, because it's not, it's not, Fornay's doing his own sidewalk. We're just connecting. It's at this little piece in front of...
Mesa Village.
Mesa on the hill.
That's right.
Right, so, okay, consent for that one? This is the change order for the SHS Bridge project, which if y'all recall, we took it on, and the, it's the county's bridge, and it's the, the school district's bridge. And so, we, we managed it, but the funding exceeded the funds that we had, the grant funds that we had, and so, this is to supplement that and move it forward, and both entities have agreed, so consent on that? All righty, consent for the financial statements? Any issue there? Okay. And then, the fire department, again, we're going back to training, so consent to allow... Okay, good. And then, consent for Mark to go Gulfport for the BoAM. Then, under human resources, we are filling in some blanks. The supervisor, maintenance supervisor, both parks and rec, Starkville Police, we get to hire some folks, and then firefighters, utilities, and just to let y'all know, Mary Ivy is moving to the, as plan accountant to Starkville Utilities. Lisa will be finding, having to fill in, and she's not doing that, however, until you get that position filled, right?
Payroll comes first.
Right, okay.
It's to Terry.
Yes. Yeah, I saw Terry back there. We're gonna make him hold the line.
The G-uro system is working.
Well, good.
So, it's speeding the process.
Okay, good. So, the remainder of these, interns, customer service, part-time, so any issues with any of these for consent?
These are all existing positions, budgeted positions.
Yeah, but, yes, there's nothing that's not budgeted, but a lot of these are the part-time for season stuff, so, yes. And Joel, you didn't get, you decided not to move forward with any cameras?
We got a lower quote, which was $105,000 threshold, so we went ahead and initiated that purchase.
That's right, for a test. Okay, good, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we weren't leaving that one off. All right, thank you. Okay, a low quote to get a portable ADA chairlift from Moncrief Pool. We have one, but it's malfunctioned, it's broken?
It's broke.
It's broken?
It's, it's been aged, can't fix it.
Okay.
The motor mechanism, it's a permanent mount to the side.
Okay.
So we have to replace it. We were going to replace it potentially with another one. They found this mobile one.
Okay.
So we can bring it inside in the offseason to help protect it less.
Absolutely, wonderful, okay. Consent for that?
Consent.
Okay. And then this is the rebid on the sports.
Consent.
Consent, thank you. We have to accept the, formally accept the bicycle ped plan in order to finalize that grant, so consent for that one? Okay. And then paying Delhoff Thomas, this is their, this is the funding for the work that they have done and are going to be doing in preparation for 11 and 12. So since we didn't put the other on consent, I would guess that this one probably is not necessarily consent. You are, you're okay with putting that on consent?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, well, then let's do it. I'm sorry, I was making an assumption there. My.
That's not an 0.9 million.
Okay, all righty. And then the other one is, this is the accepting the change order for the Musco Lighting that, that Brandon mentioned earlier, so. All right, thank you. Under utilities, we have our normal source of supply every six months. Consent for that one? And then declaring a surplus and an auction and a vehicle replacement. And then last but not least, we've got a construction for operations, facility additions and renovations. Anything about that in particular, Terry, you want to share?
I think it's just, we add some floors over there and then make modifications in the back.
Okay, all right, consent for that? Thank you, everyone.
We're now at where Alderman Vaughn's materiality threshold.
Nine million is too far, okay. We've also got a prospective land sale under executive session that Chris will bring to us. And before I let y'all go, remember at 2:00 this afternoon, I'm dressed in black for the man in black. We've got the Johnny Carsher and Johnny Cash.
Country music.
Yes, thank, my boy, I was going June Carter, no, Johnny Cash, country music trail marker, which is a big deal. Got a big tent out there, so please come join us and celebrate. It's, it's right down, it's in your ward.
Yeah, I got another camp.
Oh, yeah, it's where, it's where the tent is. And there'll be a reception after that, so that'd be great. And we've got Marty Stewart's going to be there, so we're going to have some dignitaries there. And it's a big deal because y'all, it will put us on the trail and there are numerous people nationally and internationally to come through those trails. I had no idea. But anyway, it's a, it's a really cool deal, so. If anyone, anything for anyone? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Y'all have a great weekend.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
I know it. You do. I appreciate you looking sharp.